We have a not a long agenda today. We have all committee members here, including our student rep committee members. So I don't, I don't think it's necessary to do introductions all of our, because all of our committee members are here. I would just ask staff if you're presenting or answering a question, just to identify yourself on the first time that you speak. So we have that for the minutes. With that, I'm going to just jump right in and ask for the first or second agenda item, which is the Office of Internal Performance Auditors Activity Status Update.
Awesome. All right. This is Janice Hansen. I'm the District's Internal Performance Auditor. And I have shared my screen with you guys and hopefully you can see what I am presenting. These documents are the same that's in board books, but I thought I would share just so we can all be on the same page. So a quick status update on all of the audits that we have going on. First, the ACH audit. We did complete the really the first part of the audit and that's been posted on the PPS Audit Reports page. And in the April meeting coming up, I will be able to give you guys an update on an ETA for when the final piece of the testing, just in relationship to the setup of new vendors to the ACH payment program and changes of vendor information will be done. Also, right now, we have going on the P card audit. Field work is underway and we do anticipate being ready to present that report at our next audit committee meeting in April. Next audit would be the Health and Safety Checks Audit. As we discussed in our audit committee meeting last last time, you guys expressed an interest in us doing some testing for Lippi. And in addition to the hybrid model, so we have begun that planning and we are working to test some Lippi sites and we do anticipate doing kind of our first onsite visit in early next month. Next audit, and then also on the agenda, the Health and Safety Checks Audit is a separate audit thing on our agenda today. So I'm not going to do a lot of details about it right here, but I do have a more detailed status update to provide you and later in the meeting. Next audit, it will be the Hardship Transfer Audit. We are looking to begin planning on this audit in early May. Sorry, early March. You know, with the Health and Safety Checks Audit, we will prioritize the Health and Safety Checks Audit, but we will get started on the Hardship Transfer Audit Planning here pretty soon. Following that audit, we will begin working on the Student Audit Activity Audit and that probably will be tentatively midsummer. And that is everything that I have for the OIPA Status Update.
And just a clarification, because some, the question can be asked on some of these things, like in a year, in the COVID year, some of these things, this wouldn't be the year to audit. But can you just briefly describe what the time period is that you're auditing? Say, for example, for the P card, because it's not this past year, correct?
So it does include this last year. One, the scope of the P card audit really needs to consider transactions that took place subsequent to the Secretary of State's Audit Report. One of the objectives of our audit is to really see the implementation of some of the recommendations or concerns identified in that audit. So the audit period we have selected is just this last audit or fiscal year. So seven, one, two thousand and nineteen through six thirty of two thousand and twenty. And we have also planning to test transactions further into the current fiscal year up to and including the end of October of two thousand and twenty. So it's about a year plus a couple of months. And the thought behind that was the COVID kind of struck in the beginning of two thousand and twenty. So the transactions in the the fall of two thousand and nineteen, we could compare some of that activity to see what differences there are between that time period and then the fall of two thousand and twenty, which would have been under COVID activity.
I have a clarifying question as well. So is that you're looking at the rate or the implementation of the recommendations pretty soon after that audit? Seven months after the audit and then comparing it to a length of time out from the audit that? Did I get that right?
Yes.
To see the rate or the how, how, how the implementation has happened?
Right. So we typically will do a scope of, audit scope of a fiscal year. But because the Secretary of State's Audit Report didn't come out until January of two thousand and nineteen, making sure there is adequate time for the district to get together their plan and fully implement it. And so it's a little bit non-traditional in the terms of a fiscal year. It extends a little bit beyond a fiscal year, just to make sure that what we're seeing is representative of the current activities and procedures, the way the district is currently operating.
Excellent. Thank you.
Anything else? I actually have the second agenda item. So if it's okay with you guys, I can move forward to the next item. Is that okay? Yes. Okay.
Yes.
All right. So the next item on the agenda is a follow-up discussion related to the OIPA performance measures. The slides were, you know, in board books, but I'm sharing my screen with you guys just to help. First, I left in this slide that was in our slide deck last time I talked about this, just to be a reminder of why are we even doing this? And it is because it is best practices. So that's why we want to generate some KPIs for our activity. Next, there were a couple of KPIs that we discussed last time. KPI one and two. I put in purple here within the two years of the report date as kind of a clarification in relationship to KPI number two. And so you could kind of see the purple is just the update for this time versus last time. For KPI three, this is not something that we talked about last time. So I wanted to draw your attention to this. We talked last time about whether or not KPI two, which is the recommendation implementation rate, whether or not that was a true measure of OIP activity, what it is and what is not within our control. And we talked about whether or not the rate of management's agreement with recommendations might be a better or an additional item. So I thought about it and I thought, well, let's track them both. So unless there's some objectives, I would like to kind of add KPI three, because both of those are a little bit related, but slightly different and might tell us something different on, on our activity.
I'm just, I'm just curious, would it make more sense to flip them to? Because the first one would be rate of management's agreement. So, because if they didn't, if they didn't agree, there's not going to be any implementation.
Excellent. Yeah.
I will, I mean, it's a small thing. I know it's like, it doesn't change the data, but it just like.
Yeah. And the way you think of things sequentially, it does make sense. I will flip that to be KPI number two and then by.
Julie, I was, I was about to say the exact same thing. So.
Okay.
Yeah, no problem. And then also, last time we talked about informational performance measures. And I'm just changing the term to say informational data. I thought perhaps it might be better explanation than say informational performance measures. What's that even mean? It's really the data to help inform KPI one. So for to, for discussion today, I wanted to talk about when and how we're going to report on KPIs, how we will monitor and calculate KPIs. And then I wanted to provide you guys with the draft survey questions that we came up with. So first, when and how are we going to report on KPIs? Which is really exciting. So we are going to use the district's fiscal year, which it begins July first and ends June thirtieth of each year, and that will be our reporting period. We will use the summer months to compile our data and prepare the report. And then we will present the OIPA KPIs report to the Audit Committee in its September Audit Committee Meeting. For example, in September of two thousand and twenty-one, we will provide the first OIPA KPIs report on activities during the twenty twenty-one school year fiscal year. Any questions about that?
This is more generic or broader question for PPS. Claire, do we in anywhere else have a set of KPIs that are measured and reported? In, in this sort of format?
So we have in our strategic plan and our SIA work tied to our budgeting from last year, we have some there. We also have KPIs, both instructional and operational through the Council Great City Schools that we report and then benchmark compared to other districts. But those are more of a standard urban district KPI rather than where a department has a KPI.
And are they reported on our fiscal year?
They do, they are based on fiscal year, but there's a certain, like, for instance, the operational one for two thousand and twenty just opened up within the past month and we're collecting data right now.
Okay.
Doesn't our bond work have essentially a bunch of KPIs?
They do in, well, they're working with, you know, they're in performance auditors for sure. And they have a scorecard that they're reporting to the Bond Accountability Committee.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm thinking of, that scorecard.
Okay, I will move on to the next slide and I just want to say it is not my intent to read this entire slide to you guys. It's a lot of information. My thought was to clearly document how we will calculate the KPIs. And it will be transparent because it's in a public meeting and also in the future, if there's ever any question, perhaps myself or Mary Catherine are no longer with the district, this can serve as a template for whoever is calculating them. It's clearly documented how to calculate it. So that's what this slide is for. So I'm just going to move on to the next slide. One note in relationship specifically to KPI number three that I did want to bring to your attention is currently management has the option to select agree, partly agree, partly disagree or disagree with the recommendations in our audit report. And so for the purposes of the target calculation, we're just going to group agree and just agree and partly agree together and partly disagree and disagree together to report on the calculation for hitting the target. Hopefully that makes sense. All right. So this next is just related to the informational data. So please pass that. It's just documentation of how we will calculate it. Last time we talked about a future KPI being an oddity feedback survey. So that's what I want to talk to you guys a little bit about. We utilize the IIA, the Institute of Internal Auditors Survey Template. And we've modified it to make it a little bit more applicable specifically for a school district. And I also pulled a bunch of other examples of surveys that are used by other districts to help inform the creation of the template. So the temp, the oddity survey rating scale. So we considered like honest, how will we ask the question, people to respond to the questions on a scale of one to 10? And what I think is this will add or provide us the most valuable feedback. So based off the way the questions are stated as I go with them, the way this rating scale will make more sense. But what I thought is whether they can strongly agree with the statement, agree with the statement, neither agree or disagree, disagree, strongly disagree or not done. So the, the format of the survey will have a couple of different sections, introductory, audit scope questions, auditor knowledge and professionalism questions, and audit communication and reporting questions. I did though in some open-ended questions and optional contact information. So first, the introductory questions are department name, which will be optional, but if they would like to disclose their department, that would be awesome. Audit topic, for example, what audit are you referring to in the survey? Is it the contracts audit or the ACH audit? And a space will be provided for them to answer that question. And then my position closely relates to either management or staff. Then we, the survey will move on to audit scope questions.
And Janice, can I just ask a question? And maybe this is a question for Claire. Do you, do you think people divide themselves into management and staff?
Claire, you're on mute.
Well, I see the, I think management and staff, I mean, the management is part of staff, right? So I think they overlap for sure.
Yeah, we don't need to spend a lot of time on this, but I, to me, I'm not sure, I'm not sure people would know which category they're in, because you can be a manager and I think feel like you're line staff. I mean, I, Janice, I know conceptually what you're, you're thinking of, but and again, we should, we don't need to take time in this meeting, but there may need to be a refinement of that.
I, I, I think that what we're trying to get at is the positionality to power. You know, decision making and so let, yeah. Let's offline take this conversation. I think it's a good one. It's good to locate yourself in space at all times. And this is what that question is getting at. Are you a decision maker? And where are you in the, in the hierarchy? It does tell a story.
Thank you so much for that feedback. That's exactly what I'm looking for. So as we move forward with these, please jump in as we go. And I will reach out to you guys offline to get some ideas on how I could better make that distinguishing question more, add more value to what it is we're trying to achieve by even asking the question.
Yeah, I also want to add one thing, just as a note for everyone on the call, just as a learning thing, is that when we talk about and we refer to that document about like how white supremacy shows up and it's in this like either or sort of very binary space, that this gives us, this question here gives us an opportunity to be kind of both and as Claire, you know, was referring to this, like management is also line staff and it gives us the opportunity to kind of expand our thinking and challenge everyone else to sort of not be just an either or, you know, people all the time to be both and.
Awesome. Thank you so much. All right. So for the next section, it's questions related to the audit scope. And there were a lot of options, but I did narrow it down to two. So OIPA staff solicited feedback from you and your team to ensure your concerns were adequately addressed during the audit. And then also audit objectives and purpose, scope and audit processes were clearly communicated during the initial phase of the audit. So those were the two things I wanted to really make sure we're doing. We're soliciting feedback to make sure our scope is appropriate. And then also we are clearly communicating scope and processes and procedures. So now, when you think about the scale of you know, agree or not done. So for example, if the survey response were to say not done, then that would be a lot more valuable for us to know, to improve versus like a two, a rating of a two on a scale of one to 10. So I've listed these knowledge and professionalism questions. The IIA survey template did have several questions on this topic, so I wanted to include them. This one right here that I have in bold and I've identified as tentative, I want to just kind of touch on that one with you guys a little bit. Audit, so OIPA auditors demonstrated a reasonable understanding of the area under review. I think it's a great question. It speaks to our knowledge of the topic that we're auditing. However, one thing that I've heard consistently in feedback is that a lot of times people feel as if we do not know what we're talking about because we ask so many questions. And or a lot of people will say, oh, we hate getting new auditors because we have to train the auditors. Well, the auditors come with being trained, but we do ask a lot of questions and orienting us directly to that specific situation oftentimes makes staff feel as if we don't know what we're talking about. So I'm trying to get some feedback from some of my internal auditing colleagues on how they address this question in their survey. And so I have it as tentative, but if any of you have any ideas on how I might phrase that in a way in which it would add value and demonstrate our knowledge and that's what we're trying to determine, what we're trying to get feedback on. Are we knowledgeable about the topic in which we're auditing? Um, I won't go through each one, but they are listed here for you guys. I just wanted to touch on those couple. The open-ended questions are an opportunity to get some of that qualitative feedback. So the questions are, were there aspects of the audit that you found particularly helpful? And then are, were there aspects of the audit that you found particularly challenging? And then a third one, which is hopefully just as wide open ended question as we could come up with. If you rated any of the earlier questions, anything below average, we welcome your comments outlining your concerns that pertain to that specific evaluation. And hopefully that's open enough for people to say, oh, they didn't do this. And then tell us what their thought is or questions or how can we improve that?
I have a quick question about this. So, and maybe you said it earlier, but is this, this is on a like a scale, Likert scale from like totally agree to totally disagree. How, how will the person responding know if their responses are average or above or below average?
Excellent point. Thank you. For, this is the rating scale of the strongly agree down to not done. So thank you for that. I'm going to update that to say if you disagreed, strongly disagreed or not done, please give us some feedback.
Yeah. So sometimes with data analysis, we, we want to look at that scale and say, well, I'm going to group the first two together because that's generally agreeing. Depending on whatever you're reporting, the data you're reporting, you'll want to clump the, like mostly people agree here. Again, depending on what it is you're, you're reporting on and what sort of results or hypothesis you're trying to support. So anyway, yeah, I just think for someone that isn't all nerdy about surveys, to give them a way to tell where that line is, maybe, maybe it's just a little narrative at the top of the question that says, now we're going to ask you to figure out, you know, between one and seven, where you land or something like that.
Okay, I'm going to update that because that language is definitely not consistent with the scale, the lower than average. I will update that to be related to the scale that we used. And maybe even add exactly what you just said. Okay. Then at the very end of the survey, I wanted to provide an opportunity to people to feel, be heard in any variety in which ways in which they, it works for them. So perhaps, you know, they filled out the survey, but they would really like to have a much more robust conversation about it. At the end of the survey, there is an option, if you would like to be contacted by OIPA or someone from the Audit Committee to discuss the results of the survey, please indicate below. And then provide an email address for that initial communication to set up a meeting. And again, you guys are the Audit Committee, so I don't mean to volunteer you, but I did think because I report to the board and not district administration, it would be awesome if staff did feel like they could reach out to a member, have a member of the Audit Committee respond to them if there were any concerns that they wanted to address with you guys. So hopefully that's okay. Any objections to that?
No.
Okay. Awesome. Then in, so for the survey, we would like to include the survey in the report of OIPA KPIs that we'll do each September. We won't have results in time for the September two thousand and twenty-one report, but you can expect it in the September of two thousand and twenty-two report. I also wanted to just touch on target. So for some of the other KPIs, we did identify a target. And for the survey, what I am requesting is no current target expectation. And then I would like to revisit a target expectation each year as we discuss the OIPA KPI report. And we can decide as we move forward where we want to set that target at, but at least we can get started over the next year, gather and present the information and then think about the value and establishing a target. Is that okay with everybody?
Quick, a quick question. Now you've got some auditing under your belt here. Roughly how many? How many staff members have you, you both interacted with on an audit? Is it three? Is it 30? Is it? You can tell I'm not an auditor.
Well, so each.
Does it depend on the audit? Because I would imagine it does depend on.
And on the audit. And so, yeah. So what I would envision is sending it out to pretty much anybody that we interacted with on any significant level during the audit. If we just emailed them and requested a document or someone in the IT department prepared some data for us, perhaps we don't, they don't need to get a survey. But I will, at the exit conference, one of the things I would like to ask is if management or whoever it is on the team, has anybody specifically, they want added to the list and I will include them in addition to our audit liaison, of course, Claire, and any other department managers or directors of any department that we audited. For the P card audit, it's relatively small number of people because of, we're in the P card department. But for other audits, like the contracts audit, it was very extensive. So in a situation, because it did cross multiple departments, that would be a situation where we want to send it out to a variety of people, but oftentimes it's probably less than five of who I would anticipate getting a survey request. Did that answer? Okay, awesome.
Janice?
Yes.
I, I think I understand, but just to, just to make sure. It sounds like, I think this is what you just clarified. Each person you interacted with would receive one and not just say the audit liaison?
Correct. Yeah. So we do try to identify a specific audit liaison for each of our audits. Oftentimes it is the. Oftentimes it is the director of whatever department it is that we're working in. You know, and sometimes there's a couple of different layers of management in there. We keep in the loop. So we would ideally send it to each of them. And then also whoever it is that we really worked with on a significant level. So like in the P card department, we've been, really been working with the, I think it's fiscal analyst position in that department. And so we want to send it to them also, so they can provide that feedback as well.
Okay, so, so management and then anyone you interacted with at a significant level. And then I think you mentioned anyone that is otherwise recommended.
Yes, I would like management, you know, to identify steps, people who they specifically want it. And then we'll send it, you know, just to make sure covering all the bases. Anybody who wants to provide us feedback has that opportunity. All right. So next steps for this, the audit committee can look forward to your very first OIPA KPI report in September of 2021. Again, we won't have survey information for that report, but I will. And it will be kind of light because we won't have a lot of data for this year. But I'm going to start it in September of this year and give you what I have and, and get this process going. So it's just part of each year. This is what we do. Right now I'm still working to solicit a little bit of feedback on the survey question. So if any of you have, you know, end up reading over them a little bit and want to give me some feedback, please let me know. Then what I will do is get the survey actually set up in the template in which it will be sent out. And I will send that out to you guys. So you will know what it looks like to receive it. And I will do that. So you can take a look at it before I send it to anybody for real feedback. Any questions or thoughts?
Sounds good.
Anybody?
Kate or Michelle?
Oh, I, I, I just think this is really great. I like that you're being inclusive. I love that there's a person in charge. You probably know that from experience, having one person to interface with is great. Yeah, it's all very good. Jackson Parker?
Kate?
Looks good.
Yeah. Love it.
Awesome. Okay. So the third thing on our agenda today is also something I'll be briefing you guys on. So if it's okay, I can transition into that.
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, awesome. So the next thing on the agenda is a more robust status update on the health and safety checks audit. So what I did is I created this document and it's available for each of you in port books. Again, just sharing to make sure we're all on the same page. For this, I, I took the audit plan from the approved audit plan that was already approved by the committee as well as the whole board. And I copied it in here just so we have a baseline of we're all on the same page of refreshing our memory about what it is exactly we're planning to do. One thing I did here is highlight this note. Please forgive me for repeating myself, but it's really important. I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page that the audit will not determine the adequacy of the building safety plans. It will only determine compliance with those building safety plans. Are there any questions about that? Before I move on, it's just really important to clarify what we will and will not be doing. No? Okay. So current status. We have begun planning to test some of the buildings that are offering Lippi. And, and that's going to help prepare us for more wide-scale testing once hybrid is offered. We have identified a primary audit liaison who has been selected by district management. And we are working together to create a communication plan on this audit specifically. A lot of people want to know a lot of details about the audit and it affects a lot of different departments. And so we're working collaboratively to make sure, you know, when I'm sending an email, I'm seeing all the people who would like to be in the know. And just making sure we're front-loading the communication. So everybody knows what to expect and there's no surprises. You know, the intent of this audit is not to surprise anybody or catch anybody. It is really to work collaboratively to ensure compliance with the building safety plan. No level of assurance that people know that we're checking to make sure we are complying with that building plan over time.
Just along that line, given that this is sort of a top of mind for many staff members and families. For it to be useful, it's not going to be something we're going to, you know, get the, get the data on or whether, you know, just the, the feedback six months from now, because obviously that's not relevant. What do, what do you see as the turnaround time? So you visit a school, you're, you've got a checklist, you're going through your items. When does that get sort of pushed out either to like feedback to, to staff? Because if, if the philosophy is this isn't a, we're going to just report later, but really so that there can be, if, if needed, updates or corrective action taken. With, how will that data go back to the school or to the audit committee or?
Great question. Thank you. So that's actually two bullet points down. So if you don't mind, I will answer that question after I do my next bullet point. Is that okay?
Yeah, I missed that. Okay.
Sorry. So, um, the, okay, so let me just do this bullet point here. So we have already been provided the list of the buildings where Lippi is being offered currently, along with a list of buildings that is planning and the dates for which that rollout of Lippi is planned. So we've already gotten the list as well as all of the building safety plans for each of those buildings. And we have begun to review those building safety plans. We have also met with several members of district administration to provide an overview of the audit and get some general, make sure they have a general idea of what to expect for the audit. And also in a couple of these meetings, we really wanted to dial in who wants to know what and when to build out that communication plan. So that's the, so the next bullet here, it says, we are working to create a format for students to provide OIPA with input on this audit. So we have a couple of current volunteers. Thankfully, Jackson and Parker, along with Nathaniel, have all volunteered to provide feedback. And we are also looking to diversify the student input. If you are aware of any students who you think might be interested in providing some input on this audit, please send me an email with their contact information. I'll reach out and see if we can recruit a really diverse student group to give us some input.
Can I jump in just for the students that are on the call? Thank you so much for just stepping up to student leadership. It's important and, you know, it looks good on a resume. And I'm going to challenge you to reach out to the people within your own community and, and outside of your network too. You know, reach out to Muslim American students, to Native American students and Black students. Knowing what we know today, and that's that, you know, the more diverse a team, the stronger the outcomes the team comes up with. And how important that is, it's going to help you, once you move away from Portland to go to college, hopefully. And you'll have the experience of having been able, you'll be able to answer the question like, how did you diversify the team that you worked on? And I think that's really an important skill. Especially coming from Portland where we don't have as many opportunities. But I'm going to issue a challenge for you to reach out beside, outside of your networks to forward some names of people that we need to hear from on this committee. I think it'll strengthen the outcomes and it'll be fun. You'll get to learn about other cultures and.
And it will be fun. And it will be fun. That's the key element. You can, you can describe how exciting it is to work on an audit, to give feedback. So I also want.
Well, it will be a challenge to describe fun and auditing in the same sentence. If you can do that, you got, you got it made.
I, I, I think if, I think if we could figure out a way to do that, we'd have, you know, quite a few biders. But thank you, Director DePass. You mentioned reaching outside of our network. We did mention it to the DSC. Obviously that's pretty in our network. But it's been mentioned there. Yeah, I, I, I too, when I, when I work or when I have a more diverse team, obviously it's just better all around. And there are a few, there are a few students at Benson that come to mind that I'll be reaching out to, but.
That's fantastic. Thank you for learning in the moment. And, and auditing is fun. I just want to share a quick story and that's that, or statement, that's that. The city of Portland used to, when they were recruiting for audit positions and they have a fabulous position open right now. They're saying you actually don't need to have, they're not looking for experience. They're looking for someone who's curious and wants to dig deeper. And like all of these other things that we've kind of been keeping this realm really tight without like thinking more expansively about, you know, do you need to have an auditing experience or do you just need to be like really curious about how things work? So anyway, just to give that some thought. Thank you, Parker.
Also thanks like the one piece about this, this audit is it's so highly relevant to like whether we're going back to, whether we're going back to school, whether we can participate in school activities in way, in ways in which it's most safe and which students want to, that there, there is potentially a really pertinent link for, for students right now about what's going to be covered in this audit.
I, I, I think it being of immediate consequence is another, another reason that students would really, you'd be enthusiastic. So I, I, I think it'll be, I think it'll be good. I know it's not, I'm not always the most flowery in my language, but I think it will be a process that, that we have a lot of engagement with.
I just want to add one more thing. I'm on a team currently at work and there's a young woman. We started working about a year ago together. We're on a spatial justice team talking about mapping and zoning and inclusion in Portland. And she's African Muslim. And I learned this from working also in those communities. I was really surprised to do a public meeting and nobody ever looked up at me when I was talking. Everybody was looking down. And in my current team, I'm realizing like we've done presentations and all kinds of meetings and, and she doesn't ever say anything until she does. And so she only speaks maybe once during a meeting, but she's extremely impactful. And I learned recently that in her culture, it's very common to not to speak unless you have all the information. And so it's typically going to be someone that's quieter until there's something meaningful to contribute. So, so that's to say that there are introverts and people from different countries that communicate and process information differently. And just to be cognizant of that, that not, because someone's not talking and taking up a lot of room, doesn't mean they're not interested and engaged. And that's something I just learned recently myself.
Thanks, Michelle. I wanted to bring up one other thing and that's, and I don't know if this is true for other committee members. I haven't yet toured a school to see what it looks like, how it's set up or to have somebody kind of run me through what the safety plan for, is for that school. So I'm wondering if that would be a useful exercise for us to give each of us more of a background in that. And, and if that's so, maybe we could all tour one site together safely spaced.
I know I would find that very informative to be able to have that tour to help me dial in my checklist a little bit based off real, so I would appreciate that if at least you can count me in.
I, I, I think me and Jackson as well and Nathaniel also, or student representative shoe. I know Dr. Bird gave his video walkthrough to board meeting, but I think being there and seeing it would be really helpful.
Okay, Claire, would we talk to Dan to set something like that up?
I can take the message forward to him. Happy to do that.
Awesome. So also in the last couple of board meetings, we have heard from a lot of really diverse students in reference to name changing process for their schools. And I, I think Director DePass and Director Bailey mentioned, hey, these might be people to reach out to, to get some input. So I do plan to email Shanice and ask to see if I can get some student email addresses to reach out to try to capture some of those students who are done with their volunteering for the name change and perhaps be excited to provide some additional input. All right.
So I want to, I want to add one little, one statistic and that's that, you know, for running for office or taking leadership positions that women have to be asked seven times like to run for office or to step up into leadership. And so just knowing that, like just because you ask somebody one time, it might be helpful to do a campaign of like, let's ask this person. There was a student that spoke at last night's meeting I thought would be great to ask for her, for her input. So anyway, just know that it's, it's, it's a little bit different for people from different cultures and, and girls, young women to think about themselves as leaders because that's not our culture, but so to, to go, go beyond that in your ask.
Great point. Thank you. So the other thing, Janice, I'm wondering if you all, just as a follow-up, could send us like just a template of a, the building safety plan, just so we, just sort of an idea of what is the checklist? Because this is going to be, I think it's going to be very important to continue to emphasize what this audit is and what it isn't. But I think that will be easier to, for people to conceptualize when we actually see a building safety plan. Maybe as elementary, middle and high, just a sample.
Yes, thank you, Director Brym Edwards for that. I, and you did mention that it would be helpful if I did bring that to this meeting. And I tried really hard to get something prepared for this meeting, but I am not there yet. But for a couple of people who I did kind of have a pre-audit committee check in with, I did kind of give them a sneak peek at my template that I was working on just to kind of give an idea of what it might look like. And I am getting close. So absolutely, I will provide the template to you guys just as soon as I get it prepared. And I am working on that right now. Well.
Yeah. No issues not to have it here. Just it will give us, because as there's more in-person learning, I think this, this audit will be front and center for a number of people. And it just would be good for us to know conceptually like what, what is it that's being audited?
Yep. So let me go over this because this checklist, so let me start on this. So we are working to develop a generic checklist of items that we will be testing for when we're onsite as well as a list of items that we may request while onsite. It is our intent to provide this checklist to the audit liaison along with the list of people who we come up with that needs to be included on that. And then once that's sent, I'm hoping, it's our hope that the, they share the generic checklist with everyone who might be impacted by it. So they can get a feel for what those questions might be. What are we going to ask? What are we going to want to look at? And it shouldn't be scary when we show up. We don't want to show up and surprise anybody onsite. And just being an auditor by title is oftentimes intimidating. And so to relieve some of that, I just want to be very upfront and provide the checklist. And so they will have an idea of what to expect. And of course I will share that with you guys as soon as I have it developed. I will say that there will be a disclosure on the checklist. It is a generic checklist and questions may vary. questions may vary site to site. And it's not like we won't ask anything else. But there could be more questions, but at least the generic checklist will give people an idea to help have a better understanding of what they can expect. So the next bullet point here, it is our intent to provide the audit liaison with notification of which buildings we're planning to test the following week. So for example, tentatively, right now, what we're thinking is on Wednesday of each week, we will email out, these are the buildings that we plan to get to at any point during the following week. So we want to provide notice of which buildings could be visited during the next week. I don't want to say exactly what day and what time it is that we will be there, but I think it's important to say, hey, this week, these are the list. And at some point during the week, you can anticipate that the auditors will show up.
So I'm just, I'm curious about that. So I'm going to be the skeptic right now. So if if the district has provided the list of schools, I can see that there could be some concerns that hey, if they know if they know the auditors are coming, they'll get in compliance. And why wouldn't you do random visits versus scheduled ones? This isn't meant to be oppositional. It's just, I know that's a question that community members will ask.
And that is an excellent question. And I really reached out some of my colleagues, other internal auditors to kind of see what they were thinking on this as well. So the idea is a week range is enough notice. So people, we don't want to surprise people like I'm just going to be honest, I have showed up to do a cash count somewhere and the person literally cried. So it's very hard to be a complete surprise. So if there was and if a building did want to act, you know, put on a performance just for the time in which we'll be there, well, they're going to have to maintain that performance for the entire week because they don't know which day we're going to get there. So if that's the intent that they would make it perfect just for when the auditor gets there, well, they're going to have to maintain that for the entire week. And it's unlikely that if it is truly just a performance for the behalf of the auditor, that they would be able to maintain that for the course of the week. So it's it is enough notice of vacation notification so people can be prepared, but it's not an exact notification. So there's still a little bit of an element surprise. You don't know exactly what day of the week will be there and exactly what time of the day will be there. So if there is an intent in intent to put on a performance just while it's going to have to be maintained long term. And I just really felt strongly, we wanted to give notice and I felt I thought that that week made sense. Did that answer your question? Okay, awesome. So we are committed. So this answers your initial, your first question, Julia, or Director Bem Edwards. It says, we are committed to providing the audit liaison with the results of the onsite visit within two business days. So within two business days of our onsite visit, everybody who wants to be on the list that is part of the communication plan will get an email with the results of the visit. Also, a couple of the district administration said, hey, if you see anything significant, text me before you leave, call me before you leave. And so I took their numbers and I will do that. And also I would will do plan to go over the results verbally with the district, the building administrator at that building before I leave, assuming they have time. You know, I don't want to be disruptive to anybody's schedule, but I would provide that opportunity if they have time. I will run through the results with them verbally before I leave. If there's anything significant, I will reach out to those who have asked me to reach out to them immediately before leaving. And then they will also get the feedback two days afterwards. It just, we just need to get back to our desks and really type it up and dial it in and get that sent out. Did that answer your question? So we are planning to provide the audit committee with a summary of the testing completed to date at each audit committee meeting. So in our April audit committee meeting, I will bring a high a summary report of the testing that has been done so far to kind of say, we visited this many buildings and, you know, a summary of what we found. A couple of things I do plan to do is if we find any non-compliance, we will do a repeat visit. And I would like to repeat that visit before I come to the audit committee. And that away, if there was anything identified and when we go back for a repeat visit, it's been fixed, I can say we did identify these, but upon a repeat visit, they were taken care of. Just to make sure that I'm providing the audit committee with an idea of not leave you hanging as to, well, there was a little bit of non-compliance. Well, I want to do that follow-up visit to say, okay, they've already fixed it. Does that make sense? All right. And so what the last piece about this that I do want to disclose is I would like to have reserved the right to do those follow-up visits without any notification. So they, if there is non-compliance that is identified, we won't include their building on the weekly list and we will show up completely unannounced to do the follow-up. Does that sound fair for everybody?
Sounds like Ruth Reichel, a restaurant critic for the New York Times. She used to show up in in costume unannounced.
Yeah.
But I think that I think that's really fair to give to give a full, you know, transparent notice. And then if you, I think was the marker that you found something significant or some things that are significant that would warrant a follow-up visit.
Yeah. And that way I can report out that they fixed the things if there was anything, you know. Honestly, I am anticipating so far, everything that I'm seeing is really dialed in, very organized. So this could just be a breeze audit and hopefully there's nothing to identify, but in the admit that there is, we will be communicating properly through the chain of people that need to be informed as well as following up on those and also being transparent about the process.
So may I ask just one more question? You might have said it already. You're going to, if you have significant findings, the organization, the building will know within two days. And at that point, after they've been notified, some amount of time would pass in order to address those findings. And then you would come back at some point unannounced.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think that's great.
Dress dressed in camo and with boots on to break the doors down and.
I do wear a lot of black, but so I will refrain from the camo, but black is kind of my color. But Claire, did I say anything like our from the district administration perspective? Any questions or thoughts or concerns?
Well, I really appreciate the quick notice, especially if you find something and you're notifying before you leave. I think that's really important. I mean, the whole reason for doing this is keeping our children and our staff safe. So I appreciate the attention to detail here.
Thank you. Um, okay, well, that is everything that I have for my agenda items. So I'm going to stop sharing and let Julia take back over. Director Bem Edwards.
Thank you so much. Julia is fine. We're in committee, at least for me, it's more informal. Thank you so much. I know that that'll be a very important sort of checkpoint in the system that a lot of people will be paying attention to. So the last agenda item we have, since there hasn't, there's no public comment, is just the contract audit implementation scorecard. And there's sort of two, there's two pieces that people should have. They should have scorecard and also a a memo from Mary Kane to the audit committee regarding, this is an issue that I asked about at the last meeting. Claire, do you have anything you want to cover in? Would like to share about the scorecard?
So there are two versions of the scorecard. This was the December 2020 scorecard and not as of, you know, the end of December. So we reported that in January, but there were some departments that hadn't completed their submission. So you'll see one that has the full submission for December now. So you can see all of it. But there's also one that's separate that is just the ones that changed. So there's a shorter one that shows the changes since we reported last month. So everything in it is on track and or or completed. So we're, we are in good shape in terms of meeting the timelines that have been put through from the contracts audit in particular. And a lot of the parts that have been filled in from last month, Mary Kane actually came to the meeting and verbally responded. It just wasn't put into the scorecard. So a lot of it, you actually did hear a specific report from her directly last month. But at the same time, I said last month that I would bring back the updates to this month so that we could close it out. And then, of course, our next report for this would be for March 31st.
Awesome. And our next audit committee meeting is, is it in March or April?
April 7th is on my calendar.
So it'll be after the March 31st deadline. Do any committee members have any questions about the status update of the the scorecard or activities that's happened since the last meeting?
Just a clarification. So the two scorecards are both updated as of December 2020. Is that correct?
Yes, as the end of the second quarter. That's correct. And just one, we we were trying to make it easier, but it's probably just caused confusion. One gives the whole scorecard for December now, so it's shows it's complete. But if you want to know what changed since last time, you look at the shorter version and that's, those are the changes to look at since the last time you received it.
So just in terms of version control, because we all may not be here. Let's just say five years from now. Anyway, for the for the record, if it's possible to just date stamp both of them so that we know which ones are which, so you have one that is December and then it could be, you know, December version with revisions from February, just so if somebody's not, doesn't have, somebody to verbally explain what the two are that we have at least date stamped on the document, the difference. Any other questions?
Just one. What's up with the tie? That's for Jackson.
I was gonna say, it's not for me.
And Parker, you better step up your game.
I know. I it's the, it's the, one of the few committees I didn't put on at least a white shirt for.
I mean, no, I've seen Parker in a tie many times. It's respectful. You know, what else are you going to do?
Yeah, actually, before the audit committee, I was talking with Janice. I actually had an interview this morning to study abroad over the summer.
Awesome.
Congratulations. I hope you get it.
Yeah.
Virtually, you're going to be like zooming with France or something like that.
Hopefully, I'll be able to go to Taiwan, but we'll see.
Awesome. Um, I actually wanted just to mention.
I have a sorry. Are we going to move off the topic? Because I have a question about the memo. And I know that Mary, I don't believe Mary Kane's here.
Oh, sorry.
I thought it was on the memo also.
Okay, so Mary's not here, but I'm going to just put these questions on the record and I'll follow up with Mary separately, but I want to put them into the record. So there recently was a case with, this is about, it was about contractor training and one of the recommendations was all the contractors who have direct student, who have student contact that they go through this training. And my question is that the the universe was too large, so we've narrowed it down. Recently, there was a communication that went out to, I think, all of PPS about an individual who had volunteered through MESD with some very concerning behavior and child pornography. And I'm wondering if we've just since we have sort of a test case, whether that would have, using the filters we have here, would that individual have been somebody who would be covered by the contractor training? So that that's one question. Does and I guess I'm going to ask.
So when you're doing a background check, they have to have a conviction on files. So the first time they're arrested for that, we wouldn't have necessarily add that record to check, right?
Yeah, I guess. Yes, and they had no records. So we wouldn't, there would have been no, I guess I'm thinking is like, would this type of person who would have had direct contact, who had a background check, does that mean they would have got the training? Or is it a further subset?
So what I think that I hear you wondering is if the contract that this person was working under had the training requirements in the contract. And as a result, that person would have been required to take the PPS required training courses. So that is something we can look into to see if that is the case.
Yeah, I'm just curious. And this is a, I know we had to, we had to, we narrowed the scope to make it manageable. And I'm, I'm just like pressure testing, like, do we get the right scope? Is it, you know, too narrow to or too wide? So that was one question. I noticed that we in the memo that we talked about all of our RESJ community partners. We selected them given we know they have a lot of direct contact with students that they would have a training. And I'm just curious whether non-RESJ groups and those CBOs would have the training, like, so where did what was in and what was out? Do we make some sort of judgmental call? Like, yes, these CBOs are in school, like their people are in schools every day and these other ones, it's like once a quarter and that's, and we don't feel like they're ever unsupervised. So just maybe just a little bit finer definition on how we scoped in, which I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with narrowing the scope to make it manageable and actually making it appropriately scoped. I'm just wondering where that's scoping.
You said that you were going to contact Mary Kane and bring something back. Is that what I heard at the beginning of this?
I guess I'm putting, I'm putting the the questions on the record and just giving you my background because, and I didn't flag for Mary to be at this meeting, so I will follow up, but I want to make sure that we just get the answers back into the record for the the committee meeting. And yes, I will ask her.
So my, I just wanted, my comment related to the memo was just to tie it back to the implementation document. So the document. So the recommendation was number seven. So that recommendation, which is well, in my printed copy, I must have printed the copy that has that number seven missing. So I don't have it off the top of my head, but basically it was to update the board with the delays with the of the implementation related to contractor mandatory mandatory contractor training. And so just FYI, this memo is the response related to recommendation number seven. So when you think about those things in combination with each other.
Okay, and and add a couple of the questions more about that relate to their their more related to the the environment, the virtual environment in which our students are operating right now. And I will ask those directly to Mary Kane, but I appreciate getting this for the record. Is there any any other questions about either the scorecard, the contents, or the the contract audit or the memo that was in the in the documents for the committee?
Yeah, just a clarification. Do we pick up arrest records or convictions when we're doing that kind of a background check?
I don't have the answer, but I I know that we follow the rules that we have in place, but I can, we can find that out.
It'd be interesting. I'll add that to the list of questions I send to Mary.
And Julia, when you do that, you might also mention the Raptor program because I know that the Raptor program is something that volunteers or contractors can log into. That's a little bit more of a real time check. So I'm not sure what level of assurance that might, but if you mention it, it might prompt her to look into that also.
Okay. Anything else?
I just wanted to mention that in a couple of audit, when we talked about this, you had mentioned that you would compile the questions from different audit committees members and provide them to district administration so they could have an idea of what kind of questions to expect related to the implementation. So Jackson has given a list of questions and I afforded that along to Claire and kind of prioritize them based off of a conversation with Jackson. And so hopefully that will give them an idea for next time, what questions perhaps, you know, there's, it's such a broad scale to get everybody to answer all the questions. It would be a very large meeting. So, you know, kind of grouping them together like, okay, well, maybe this team might be able to answer these questions. So it's just a idea.
Right. Let's follow up on that and our planning for future meetings. Anything else? Okay, I can't see everybody like shaking their head that they've got nothing else. So I'm going to take it. I'm going to take the affirmative that all right. I want to thank this staff for the preparation of both the documents for the meeting and also the presentations. And thank all the committee members who came prepared today to engage with the content. And we'll wrap up 13 minutes early.
Thank you for everyone. Bye, everyone.
Bye, everybody.